Good evening, welcome to a special session of the Santaquin City Council. It's the 8th of April at 7 o'clock. We would like to welcome everyone here. We won't do a roll call because all are in attendance. And I would like to ask if someone would be willing to lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I will.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would also like to ask if there's someone that would lead us in an invocation or a thought? Dennis?
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be gathered here again this evening and the opportunity that we have to discuss these special considerations of the city at this time. And we pray that thy Spirit will attend us. Please bless the council and the mayor to be wise in their questions and their decision-making. And pray that thou will continue to send thy great blessings upon this community and its citizens and its businesses. And we invite again thy Spirit to be with us now this night and do this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks Dennis. I want to thank each of you for coming tonight. And there are some things that we need to address and we need to talk about, which we will excuse to an executive session in just a minute. And what I want to do is just make it official through a meeting that Ben Reeves has put in his resignation as a city administrator in preparation for a new opportunity that he has accepted. And he will be with us for the next five to six weeks, which now is a time for us to prepare, take a look at what we have with leadership and possible leadership and possible opportunities that are here, not only within the organization but without. And we need to discuss all of these things, but we also need to make sure that we are completely in compliance. So as we discuss tonight, anything that has to do with our present employees, which is a reason to which we can call an executive session. And at that time, we will ask, or I will ask for a motion and we'll leave this meeting and go to the executive session and give us a chance to talk about the issues that have to do with employment. And anything that goes along those lines, anything that needs to be in this meeting, we will reconvene anyway to close it. And we want to make sure that we avoid anything that would not be transparent, especially in the case of Utah State Code. So with that in mind, I want to remind you, those are ways that we need to act. And I really wish that we didn't have to even do this right now. You know, I've been in this job now for a good three months and a week. And unfortunately, we are preparing to let a very good man go on and enjoy another stage of his life. And I do want to thank you, Ben, for everything that you have done up to this point and hopefully in the next five to six weeks, because we have a lot of stuff to do. And keeping all that in mind, I just want to make sure that everybody knows Ben is leaving on his own accord. He is not leaving with any problems, any issues with the city. This is a decision that he and his family have made. And, you know, I just want to say that, number one, our employees are very important and we should protect them and do everything we can to listen to them, to be there for them, to manage and to do things properly. But when they make decisions like this, we hope that it's always in the case for the betterment of the family, because that family is number one with everything. And I've told Ben over and over, this is important. And as we go through this process, I want to remind you that maybe we ought to be looking just a little bit deeper into how we are managing, how we are taking care of our employees, how we're looking at this city as a whole. And the reason I say that is Santaquin City is small in most people's eyes, but it has a worth of nearly a billion dollars. So in reality, the six of us that make this city council are operating, managing, and working hand in hand with our city staff to run a billion-dollar corporation. And we have 160 or how many ever employees. We need to make sure that we have the right people in the right positions and that we're making the right decisions, not only for everybody in the city, but for those that take the time to be employed by us, which gets into their pocketbooks, into their family time, everything. So as much as I regret having Ben go, and I do, I think Ben has been a very great asset. He has put 12 years, 13 years in with Santaquin. And for a city administrator, that's a lot of time. And I just am grateful for the good things that have transpired. I want to tell you right now, there are things that we need to have in the back of our mind, maybe more so than we did yesterday morning, or the day before or last week. And that is, the business of Santaquin has to go on. We have a budget that's coming up. We have a meeting with Utah League that we want to get to, to make sure that we're doing all things as correctly as we possibly can. We need to build each other up. We need to be there to make sure that the transition that happens will happen as perfect as we can make it happen. And I want to make sure that this is a time when I want to look and do and make sure that we make the right decisions all the way through. So with that in mind, I'd like to go to a couple of things. And I may have want to ask, do any of you have any questions or anything before we get started tonight? I've armed Brett with pool noodle that if I misspeak something, he's going to whack me. He's not only counsel, he's a wrestling mania participant tonight. I just want to make sure there is nothing that anybody could look at that we are not doing properly, 100% across the board. So I do have the staff in here that I wanted to have in here, because there are things that we may want to see or hear. And we may go into it a little bit deeper. But I also have maybe something to surprise them with tonight, too. And that is, I want them to start thinking about what their expectation may be as they look forward to the next couple of months, now that we're certainly looking at a change. And, you know, if there's a sentence that you want to share, before we go into this executive session, I'm going to want you to just kind of plant a seed. Okay? Now, since there were no questions, I'm going to start with a couple of things that I think we need to do. And, you know, the city needs to know this, too. And that is, what is the job description for the city administrator? Because he is the city administrator, isn't he? Do you know what his real title is? Any idea?
Head chef and bottle washer or something like that?
No, it says city manager on the thing.
It is.
Our job description for this was written in January of 2003. It really stresses how important it is that you know windows. And so maybe you're a window washer, I don't know. Certainly windows, but there are a lot of changes that have transpired in technology and also the structure of this city. And when it calls out in there the duties that the city manager slash city administrator has, it doesn't really list what we have as titles for each of these. It doesn't talk about the assistant city administrator, community services, or community development, or anything else in that regard. Codified, it's number 100, whatever that means. And so, and maybe it's just not necessarily a code that we go by for a job description, but it really is something that we need to see. I think it's out of date and I think it needs to be looked at again. Do each of you have your computers with you?
I think you pulled my one.
You what?
Shannon may have a more up-to-date version than the one I had, which was...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
When he was hired, we had a job description of the update. He wasn't hired.
So it was updated in June of '09, which would have been when he came on. So if it hasn't been updated for 13 years, it's still way behind. And my whole reason for even bringing that up is, I think we need to start with square one. Okay? If we're going to bring on or make some changes, we better take a look at this very deeply and make sure that the qualifications, the responsibilities, the names of organizations, the way in which you, as a city administrator, take care of all of the breakdown that we have presently. You know, it doesn't show a flow chart, obviously, and it probably doesn't need to show a flow chart on it, but it needs to call it out so that I think it follows and we can follow it. The other thing would maybe be good is to look at those other organizations we have and get those up to date as well.
They're much more up to date.
Are they?
Because there's been transitions in other departments.
Do we usually only change these when we hire a new person? So the rest of the time, don't change the, don't change the job description, or if it is, should I submit a resume somewhere?
Well, all job descriptions have the magic phrase, "other duties is assigned," and so those evolve over time. And so clearly, since the time I started in 2009, the city has more than doubled in size and our city staff has more than doubled in size. And the responsibilities and the job duties of all of the staff have grown in support of our residents, so.
Fine, I found a place for that. You know, you're exactly right. This city has taken on a new look. And even with the opportunity to apply for loans that we will no longer be eligible for, you know, it goes hand in hand with everything else that we do, you know? That in mind, there's kind of three things, and you may have to help me in case I misspeak here, but there's three options that we will be able to look at as we bring in a new city administrator. And, you know, in most cases, when somebody new is hired, the vetting process is probably just as strong. The only difference is the person that becomes the city administrator is a person that really is the closest to the work that we need to do. They're the ones that report back to, he's the one or she is the one that reports back to us, that is heading all of these organizations, is directing finance, in charge of the budget. You know, they're, these descriptive items are all listed in this two-page document. And I will send that to you. In fact, if you have just a minute, why don't you just send them that same PDF so they've all got it?
Sure.
And they can take a look at it. We need to decide right now, I think, how is the best way to get this job description going first? How do we update that? How do you want to update it? Okay, I'll do it and...
I, for previous similar circumstances, we have each reviewed it on our own and then sent comments and feedback of any changes that we would like to see. And then I'll come together and discuss those and work it out until, and have a discussion about what each individual would like to see. And I think that that really helps to give insight as to what others are picking up on and what their perspectives are, what their experiences have been with, in other circumstances, and then work together to create a fresh, updated document. But the review of it happen, can happen on our own time and then we come back together.
Okay.
Just an idea.
Do any of you have any other comments you'd like to make?
That's kind of what I was thinking. We'd done with other employees, directors and whatever, we'd looked at and had time to go over that and then come back together to update it.
We can provide you with some sort of base, if you want that, either the current one or the...
Shannon? Please state your name, too.
We can provide you with a template. If you want somewhere to start, we can, I can give you what we currently have, or there's lots of city manager job descriptions, even for, you know, municipalities that are around us, that we can use as a template to start with.
I kind of like that. I do know this fits within the realm of what we've done before. I was going to suggest possibly, and I like this, and I think we all need to look at it and approve it, and I do not want to move ahead until we've got the description taken care of. However, Ben, you've worked in this position for the last 13 years. You're probably the most adept at what needs to be in that document. I would prefer that we maybe look this way, too. How about if you did an update to the document? And your bandwidth is pretty taken right now. Is there a few hours or a couple of hours you could put in to do an updated version?
Sure, I'd be happy to. And if, maybe before this whole process begins, is it okay if I took just a few minutes and then talk about what other cities have done and then, and all that?
I'm actually getting to that.
Okay, okay.
You're okay.
That is just fine. So I have sat in on many interviews, panels with various cities as a board member of the Utah City Management Association and past president. And there are a number of job descriptions. We can pull elements in to ensure that it's updated and is also compliant and takes into consideration with not only state code changes to the city manager title, as well as takes into consideration our new and updated organizational chart and structure. It's important to note that city managers are known by many names. And it's usually based on the form of government. So we're often called city managers when it's a city manager form, or mayor, city manager by ordinance, city administrator, but also chief of staff when you have a strong mayor. So we're often known by different names.
So what am I?
You're a mayor of a...
Six-member council.
Six-member council.
There you go.
And with a manager by ordinance.
I like that, I like that suggestion to take the one that we currently have and then have a few maybe that come from cities of similar size and circumstance and compare them and be able to see if there are any elements in others that we like or don't like. And I think that that would help facilitate the process in the review of what we already have.
I want it kind of pared down to where we're not going to have to deliberate on the job description for a month to do. I want, I would only like a couple of things that are sent back so that we can have action in the absolute next meeting that we hold, which will be on Tuesday, the 19th, is that it?
I believe so.
And that way, we will, we can just put the job description there, approve it. That will allow us then to do a kickoff if, in fact, you know, that is the way that we go. So there's a couple of other things we need to do.
Mayor, before you go on, can we decide on what title we're going to call the position? Is it going to be city manager or city administrator?
He said if it was a strong mayor, then it would be the chief.
Our city ordinances actually has it defined as city manager.
Okay. I've just heard different terms this evening, so I wanted to clear it up.
Sure.
Well, I get them all the time, too. And if that's where we go and that's where we stay, that's fine. That's just how I want to see the document when we get to that point. And I love the thought that we can now bring this up to date. We'll have a good starting ground and we'll be able to look at this completely. I have two more or one other item I wanted to go over, and then I was going to go to Ben, but Ben, do you, would you like to take a couple of minutes?
Yeah, I won't take long. It's definitely been an emotional couple of days and I think I got all my tears out, so hopefully I don't get them now. But what an honor it has been to serve the residents of Santaquin City for the last 12 and a half years. We have gone through some challenges as a community, and from the very first day, the city staff has, and the city council have dealt with everything from sewer projects that were very difficult for the community to embrace, yet came together and coalesced and completed some fantastic work. Just so pleased with our city staff. I think there's nothing that I take greater pride in, in the great team that we have. I feel that every single department is just running on all pistons right now and then just doing fantastic. Our department directors are exceptional, and it's certainly hard to say goodbye to them. It is just a privilege to be able to work with these great people. We've always had bumps along the way, but deep down inside, I think our staff loves the community that they serve. And I've always appreciated that the council has been unified behind the staff. So thank you and thanks to your predecessors. But as far as the work that has been undertaken, everything from widening Main Street to connecting of Summit Ridge Parkway to the extension of Highland Drive, sewer treatment plants that are state-of-the-art, to having the grocery store, which was the number-one project and request that was given to me when I came on. The foundation has been laid for a future high school and a future middle school within our community, which is another identifying and focused area that the council wanted me to work on when I was hired. Water tanks and secondary irrigation systems that are fully metered. It's an example of wise water management throughout the state. Taking and seeing our city go from the downturn of the economy when we are coming off furloughs and the resources of the city were next to nothing to the point where we're AA bond credit rated by S and P and have full reserves in our city coffers. To be able to ensure that we don't have any bumps in the road, no matter what the economy might do in the future, we are well-positioned and well-prepared. And I just, I see new city halls on the horizon. I see the heart and soul of our city coming together with gathering places. I see great things happening and I attribute it all to the people that I've worked with. It is a team effort. Nothing could be accomplished by any one individual. It takes elected leaders that support policies that are good and wholesome and take care of the public trust. It takes council, support of a manager, to be able to implement those ideas and those policies. And it takes exceptional staff at every level. And we have career employees who have been here, taking care of the needs, great and small. And it's just been an honor and a privilege, and I feel like I'm leaving on a high. I feel like I have a deep bench with exceptional people that could take over. And I think Santaquin is on a trajectory to continue, and I just want to make sure that you know, anything that I can do to help you and those I leave behind be successful, that is my goal. So thank you for the time.
When I first started this discussion tonight, I asked you, is there a couple of items or things that come to your mind, things that we should bring up and discuss, or that would affect you and where your job is right now, or suggestions as we move forward? And I just want you to think about, you know, is there one or two things that you would like to say? And I want to direct that to the staff so that we've, we kind of have a good jump-off point. Does that make sense? And then probably we need to dismiss into the executive session, but let's do that first. And so I just want to give you a minute or two each, if you would. And if you don't have anything you want to say, you're more than welcome to say, that's been covered. Okay? So Dennis, I want to start with you. Do you want to add?
Ben has been a great friend and a mentor and a wonderful example of true servant leadership for the city, for the time that he's been here. And definitely, it's one of those instances where to find, there's no way to find a replacement for Ben because of who he is. And at the same time, I guess my caution to the council is that you don't just look at what is an updated job description need to look like, but really, it's an opportunity to say, who does this person, the role this person is going to take on, what are the characteristics that we need that person to have to move the city even further into the future? And definitely, I echo what Ben has said, there's been so much accomplished in the last 10, 12 years that he's been here, that you've been here as elected leaders, and the city's going to continue to grow. And the city's going to continue to grow. We know that. And part of what we need to be finding is somebody that I think has had some experience with, with growth, with being a bigger city. You know, it's hard to say we want a city manager for a town of 5,000 people anymore 'cause we're not going back there, I'm afraid to say. And so definitely we need somebody with just as much experience and more as Ben has brought to this position. And so definitely we're gonna miss him. Love you, brother. And, but it's again, I don't think that, I would again caution you to just, rather than say, let's create a new legal, a new legal description, a new job description, let's also take a look at what are the main priorities. Let's look five, 10, 15 years down the road and look at who can help propel us toward an even greater future.
Thank you. Norm?
I just echo what Dennis has said. I've learned a lot from Ben. I appreciate working with the council. And as Ben said, the, the council, this council and previous councils have really looked out for the city employees. And I would encourage you to continue to do that. That's our best, that's our biggest asset that we have. And, and we have great employees right now. We have a, a wonderful staff that, that works hard and very diversified and has a lot of abilities and, and is willing to serve the community. I would just encourage you to continue to do that. And, and again, thank Ben for his, his leadership and the things that I've learned from him have been immeasurable and innumerable. So thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah, so being put on the spot, I don't know what else, what more to add, but I, I would say this. I, I too echo and appreciate the, the person and the, the, the role that Ben has played in my life and, and in the, the city. I, I gotta say, I don't think a lot of people truly understand the sacrifices that Ben makes and the hours that he puts into his job. Those are gonna be big shoes and, and a lot of hours to, to fill in. I guess what I would say is, is I don't think you should be looking for like a replacement for Ben. Whoever fills that position is gonna be a different person. And, and Ben is, is one of a kind and, and there's gonna be a lot of things that, that he brought that, that will be missed. But I, I would say that Ben has truly been the administrator of the city in the five years I've been with the city and, and has given a lot of direction and guidance for the staff. I think in this transition, that's gonna be something that we're gonna be looking for is that direction and guidance. And with Ben not here, we'll be looking to the mayor and council and, and the person who fills this position to, to provide that direction and guidance. So that, that would be what I'd have to say this, this time. And, and I, I echo what's been said. I appreciate Ben and, and wish people could truly recognize the impact that he's had on this community.
Thank you. Shannon, thank you for coming. You have been given a lot of responsibility in the last little bit and thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome. I'm not gonna go into a thank you to Ben because he knows how much I appreciate him and he knows how much I'm gonna miss him and how much I know how much he's done for the city and the, the positive things he's done for the city. I see it every single day. So I'm not gonna go into that. I think he knows how I feel about him. If I had to say one thing, I think maybe I'd echo maybe what Dennis said and don't, don't focus too much on a job description, but pretty, pretty much it's industry standard. I mean, you're gonna see job descriptions that are pretty much the same. But focus on the characteristics of what you're looking for, you know, kind of what Jason said and what, what Dennis said. What are you looking for? Who fills that role? But two, I would just maybe suggest that whoever it is that you pick, that you choose to fill this hole that we're going to have, that you stand behind that person 100%. You support that person 100% you as the council, the mayor and the council because your city manager is only as good as the support that he has or that he feels he has. So that would just be my recommendation is just whoever it is, you stand behind him 100% and, and let them know that you have, they have your 100% support.
Thank you, Shannon. Thanks Dennis. Thanks Jason. Thanks Norm. Darn your hide. Penny, I'd have you stand up too, but I, I don't know. The thing that makes me the maddest is he's taken another one of our employees with us or with you, with him. Yeah. Said that wrong all the way around. As we get through this tonight, there's one, one thing that we need to start getting into our own focus and that is the naming of an interim person to act as the administrator. And the reason behind that is business has got to go on. We've got to download the information. We need to make sure we've got everything that will move forward. And that interim person, whoever it is that we put in, will be the one that's gonna have to spend some extra time with Ben until the 18th of May, when that change takes place and beyond if we don't have a replacement by then. And I, I can't tell you when that might be. I agree with you on don't, don't focus on a job description. However, without a job description that is valid and really fits the needs that we want as a council, we're gonna stumble going forward. And so having it fit, a city of 15,000 that is growing daily, we need to know what that guy's gonna do or what that lady's gonna do. And the last thing I wanna do is set somebody up for failure. The person, the persons that work for the city, especially our staff, our directors, always have a target on their back. And that target is a given size. And when you get to the level of the city administrator, the city manager, that target 10 times its size. Because in cases, that person becomes the spokesman for you as a council, us, when in fact, the directive is that person is acting under our direction and is really taking the bullets for us. And, and we need to be careful. We need to make sure, number one, even through this interim, that we're not setting anybody up to fail in any way. We're not setting anybody up to lose anything. What, what I want to make sure is that we're professional and that we are on top of every issue as it comes forward in understanding of what the expectation will be, not only by the council, but what the city may want. And we're all elected to represent 15,000 people out there. Well, 13 something.
I think with building permits, it's actually 16, three right now.
Yeah. So there's, there's a lot to do. So I am right at the point where I feel like we're gonna need to go into an executive session. However, I know you came into the meeting and I didn't want to just say, oh, we had a couple of people walking by down on the street and, and they didn't have anything better to do. And I wanted to listen to this special meeting tonight. And I appreciate you being here, but if there is some reason that you had to be here or wanted to be here because it was a council meeting and you wanted to say something, I would invite you if, if you wanted to, you're welcome to.
No, we just wanted to come up and listen to what you guys are talking about is all.
Oh, okay.
We're not on the internet side of things.
You're not on Facebook?
No.
I love you guys. Make note of that. Thank you for coming. And do you understand what an executive session is?
Yeah.
So, so this meeting will be adjourned only while we go to an executive session. Everybody will be asked to leave and things will be discussed in a manner of people. And we have to be very careful about everything that we say. At the end of that executive session, we'll come back in and close the meeting, at which time there may be some information that we will start to discuss out on the, on the meeting. So, you know, people don't think they're doing something behind a closed door. We are going into the executive session to protect the employees of the city while we discuss this. And so thank you for coming. Appreciate you being here.
And if there's any action, the council will take it after they come out of executive session.
We will, we will take no votes. We, we do not interview people. We do not do things against the code of the state. So, and our lawyer is sitting right next to me at all times, no matter what.
With the noodle.
With the pool noodle. Yeah. And he's part of the WWF, so. Yeah, something like that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for letting us in.
Oh, you're very welcome. And if you wanna come back and we'll open back up in a while. I, I don't know.
It's a whole, it could be a half hour, it could be two, three hours.
I understand.
It depends on what the council, it's really up to them.
What, what was your names?
Michael M. Keith Evans.
Good to meet you.
Nice to meet you guys.
You know, I think I know you.
Yes, you do.
Okay. Just call me.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Do you want the door closed?
We'll, we'll close it when we do this. So are there any other questions at this point? Have I belabored things long enough? You're getting ready for the big surprise. Lynn Dangier-Hite, looking for a motion to, to go to an executive session?
So moved.
For, for the purpose?
Well, for the purpose of personnel, executive personnel.
For the character competency and professionalism of an individual.
I was hoping that I had that written because I couldn't remember. And so, under that, is that okay?
Yeah, perfect.
Perfect. That's what I was gonna say.
I'll move on that.
And that's what you needed to say in order to go there.
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Penny, would you?
I like that down there. Do we have to have a motion to go back into?
No, a motion was to go out of.
Yeah, okay, so we're good to go. Welcome back, we're reconvening the council, regular council meeting for the eighth of April. It's eight forty-one. We have had an executive session discussing some of the direction and some of the issues with personnel and how we could handle best moving forward. So I think as, as our discussions had gone forward, everybody is pretty much ready to go forward with a couple of things. First off, please expect that the council will be meeting with, with you guys or the directors to, to make sure we know where all things stand. I think that, that's a good understanding of where we are and where we try to be with the individuals that are leading each organization. We really want to move forward with the job description. And the job description to ensure this starts with the city manager and we would like you to take that, make some additions, put it on a, put it on Word and just track the changes as we go through. And maybe by the time it gets down the line, we can start comparing it. And I don't know, do we want to go with two comparatives or do we want to just kind of have these guys melt the other document into one?
Yep, ultimately, yeah.
That's right. Just kind of.
Do you want to look?
We just have one to go through.
Take the changes and go through it and then we can make changes from that one.
So, so flesh it out as directors and as staff of this city to a point that you feel comfortable with what the job description of a city manager is. And, and if, if it changes with what we have right now, let's just make sure we have it. So we have a good basis to go by, okay? And the four of you for sure need, along with Ben, so the five of you need to be involved in this process so that we're molding this to expectations that you have professionally with your occupation. And that we want to look at as we then melt that, that, that document into this. Now, the other thing that I want to see in particular, so that I can start making comparisons and seeing that there is no overlaps or losses and, and we'll share this as, as a council, we want to see the job description for Norm as the assistant city administrator. We want to see the job description for each of you so that we understand your expectation, what your job title is and that you're following through and it fits within the realm of the city administrator's responsibility. So from the development on, I, I would like to see that. And you know, it's, it, and I, I just said this a minute ago, but it gives a wrong impression if a mayor walks in and starts asking for everybody's job description and then it turns into, you know what, we don't need to put that on.
And Mayor, just, just, I, I totally respect that and I think it works really well, but it's important to note that each one of your directors have contractual relationships that are tied to job descriptions currently that are in place with the city of San Antonio.
And, and we knew that and talked about that very specifically.
Okay. So, so change may have impact.
Yeah, we, we're not planning on making the changes, but we don't want to misspeak.
Sure.
And I think in each of our regards and, and maybe Lynn and, and Betsy have a different outlook, outlook and, and Dave, they've been on the council for a while through a couple of those changes. The rest of us want to make sure that we understand those too, so there's not an expectation as we're bringing on a, a person with this title.
Sure.
What we would be looking at and how that would affect any of the other titles that are in tune with that. We don't intend to change anything with any of the contracts. We don't intend to change those job descriptions unless we see something that's really out of line. And then I think we would just say, hey, have you guys looked at this? Or it would be something that we would go through the right channel to do it. And to change a contract, we're not even contemplating any of that.
So Mayor, can I ask you a clarifying question?
Sure.
So you're asking for the, the city manager description to be updated, but then just to supplement that for your review, the existing that we have, you're not asking for changes
No.
To the rest of them, just to be able to see those side by side with the, with the city manager?
Not whatsoever. All we really want to do is make sure that we're educated ourselves so that. Sorry, just a little COVID. Not really, no.
Let me just pull out my mask.
Golf course.
You know, it's almost nine o'clock, you have to laugh at something. Oh, oh, oh my goodness. Jeez.
I just barely got all ten.
This is bad Diet Coke, sorry. I, I hope what you understand and give from this is we are looking at this as a decision-making process. We have gone through how we want to handle this at this point. However, we want to make sure that as we're ready to kick it off, that it meets all of our expectations. It will not be whatever you're thinking right now it's going to be. And I can, I can promise you, the way that this will be handled is we will look for the best candidates to vet and to put into this. I understand that we're probably going to limp along a little bit. And when that comes about, people may be asked to just take a little bit of more responsibility to get through it. And all I can say is in the coming weeks, once we get that job description set, then we'll be able to talk about how we're going to go through the vetting process and even bringing on an MPA to help us as we vet. So, MPA program.
Oh, BYU program like they did when I was hired.
Well, actually it was suggested that we look at UVU too.
They have an MS or MPS which is more public infrastructure. They don't have an MPA or administrator.
Okay. That may answer that. So I would ask if there is contact or somewhere where we could look at, at that. You and I could talk about it in the near future. Each of you will be just interviewed or talked to. I, I'm going to try to talk to each of you separately anyway. Norm, you and I had a good talk this morning. I don't think it's going to change a whole lot from then, okay? Well, I don't know, maybe so. We'll still have another one. I want you to know that this is a good. I want you to know that this is a good council. We've talked about some very good things. We have been given good information from each of you, even though you just gave a short testimony of where you think things should head. And we've taken notes and we are not in a position where we want to say, all right, we're ready to kick things into gear and get rolling. We are ready to start formulating every one of these ideas now and make the right decisions. You agree? Anything any of you'd like to add? Oh my goodness.
I will.
Okay.
You, you might be sorry that you asked.
I'll eat a candy bar then.
Yeah, one with a lot of caramel. I have, I have said this before, but the time that I have spent now ten years serving this community in, has, has changed my outlook, my perspective. Has definitely increased my love for this city and its people. Though there be differing opinions, that's, that's how progress is made, is by bringing different opinions together and, and making the hard decisions that grownups are supposed to be able to make in a peaceable way. And it has changed me and, and I'm better for it through hardship and frustration and, and a lot of joy and, and positive things. That the positive things far outweigh the, the frustrations. And a big, big piece of that is Ben. He has never done anything besides what the mayor and council have asked him to do and advised him to do. He is truly a quality civil servant with integrity and a good heart. And he has had the support of Penny and his family through a lot of tenuous times and struggles in our city that I refer to just as growing pains, like we're the gangly teenager. We don't quite know which way is up and we have acne and our clothes fit weird and our hair's greasy sometimes and, anyway, I, the, the, the loss will truly be felt on many different levels because he's not only an excellent employee, he has become a friend. He and Penny both, and Caitlin. We will sure miss Caitlin on the U City Council. She is a great contributor and full of enthusiasm and wonderful ideas and she will definitely be missed. And, and there's, there's no replacing that. And in the same light, I just wish Ben and Penny and their family the very best. And I hope that everything works out the way that you want it to. And I thank you for the, the positive things that you have helped facilitate during your time here and the love that you have shown to our community.
Thank you.
I think we'll probably have more eulogies next meeting or that I went after, but I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. One last item of business, and that is with Ben leaving, he's dragging Penny off. And so, there is, there is a lot of incredible work that she does. And I want to thank you Penny for, for all that you do and it's always in the background and.
Yeah.
That needs to be a consideration, especially as we move forward, as we start opening up for jobs that need to be done, that needs to be spelled out as well. I know she has a contract that was awarded differently than a, than a regular employee and I'm not sure how it all came about.
Pardon? Not an employee, she's an independent contractor.
Correct, I just want to make sure that's on record.
She's a Penn ninety-nine.
Yeah.
She's not an employee at the city.
Yeah. So, so we need to consider, are we going to make an employee out of this? Is there something that we want to extend that would help us with other situation? The, the one thing that's been very deeply discussed tonight is the amount of work and the time that you guys spend away from your families and we want to be very aware of that because, you know, spending sixty hours a week and not being able to go to the kids' ballgame or, you know, see your wife or your husband, it's very draining. And so we want to make sure that things are being met, but not to the detriment of your families. So, we appreciate everything you do. We appreciate the many hours that you've put in Ben and each of you put a lot in. And it doesn't go unnoticed. I wish we had a way that we could just say, you know, magically just turn it off at four o'clock and you could go home. And sometimes it just doesn't work that way, but please know, we're aware of it and we're trying our very best to handle all of these things. So, did I forget anything? There's what?
There, there's an, on the agenda, there's an opportunity if the council wanted to take any action. If you toast not to, then you, no actions needed.
We, we decided not to take action because we want to move forward with the whole process after we get the description in place, so.
Do we need to table that or can we just let it ride?
You can let it ride.
It's a DPA, so we're fine. I think we've taken up enough time. Lynn?
We've taken up enough time. Could we have, maybe staff give us suggestions on Penny's job, too, as we go through this process of, I mean, they're, they work with it every day. Penny's probably the one to tell us is, how that would be, is it better to keep it an independent contractor or make it a, a job in the city and get the feedback from the staff in our next meeting, too?
Good idea.
The other thing is the expectation. What, what was expected and could we actually increase that to where it, it has more meaning or more, you know, notice? You've done a good job, but it's, you know, it's, it's a hidden job for some reason. Maybe that's the wrong term. It's, it's one that is in the background.
Behind the scenes.
And, and.
But very important.
So needed and everything else, so, okay? Going forward, we'll probably have Emily in here and she may sit back in the back instead of up front to take care of the Zoom as, you know, depending on how this all transpires. So, good enough? Let's go home. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's go home.